Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this hearing of the planning commission to order. And if you could all stand and join me in the flags loop again. So I'm going to go through a little bit of the procedures that will follow for the meeting this evening. Oh, actually, should we do roll call first? I'm a little rusty at doing these live.
Committee member Ogasaki. Have they released on the call? Okay. Commissioner Chang. Commissioner Brody.
Vice Chair Boyle. Present.
Chair Dustin.
Here.
With the excuse absent of Commissioner Wright. Thank you.
So the agenda for this meeting has been posted 72 hours in advance of the meeting at San Marino City Hall, the public library, the San Marino Recreation Department, and on the city website. Each commissioner has received plans and staff comments and has reviewed every item on the agenda and has visited each site involved in the various projects. The general order for hearing each case will be as follows. Staff will discuss the case and provide background information and a recommendation. Then the applicant or the applicant's representative will be asked to comment or present their presentation on their proposal. The hearing will then be open for public comment, and I will ask for comments for, against, or about the project. In all cases, please come forward and give your name and address. When you're speaking on an item and someone has already spoken to your concerns in a similar fashion, there's no need to go on at length. You can just simply acknowledge agreement with the previous speaker. But if you do have any additional comments, please feel free to make those. At the conclusion of public comments, the public hearing will be closed, and then I will ask for comments from each of the commissioners. Most of the cases before us involve variances, conditional use permits, and/or design review. We will discuss and act on each one individually. In each case, variances will be considered first, then conditional use permits, and then finally, design review. If there is no motion for approval or denial, the planning commission has the option of continuing the application to a future meeting. In the event of a continuance or a denial, it is hoped that the applicant will have heard comments during the public comment period and during the commission's deliberations that will be useful in resubmitting an application. It is important for the property owner to understand that once a project is approved by the commission, the drawings become legal documents. If any changes are made to the project subsequent to approval without obtaining proper approval of those changes, then the property owner is in fact breaking the law. There is a risk of having to change the project back to the originally approved design or paying a fine to the city of San Marino equal to the greater of 5% of the project valuation or $2,500, and then resubmitting the changes made to the project to the commission for approval. It is also important to understand there's a 15-day appeal period after action has been taken. The applicant or any interested party to request the city council to review and act on the case. The commission will usually take items in the order shown on the agenda. Occasionally, we will take them out of order. I don't believe that will be the case this evening. We have a very brief agenda and nothing that I think is of substantial concern or dispute. Uh, the commission will not start after, new items after 11:00. Again, I don't think that's an issue, so to start with, I'm going to ask for any public comments that anyone may wish to make that are not in regards to an item on the agenda this evening. If there's anyone here or on the line, please indicate at this time.
Chair, online, there are no requests.
Okay, so I'm going to close that portion of the public comments, and we'll move to the first agenda item, and that is agenda item one. Modification to conditional use permit CUP 20-19 at 1151 Oxford Road. Staff, if you could give us a report.
Thank you, Chair. On February 24, 2021, the planning commission approved a conditional use permit to remodel and reconstruct the Rose Garden Tea Room. As stated in the staff report, the applicant has requested a modification of the size of the garden tea room. Up in that approval, the applicants reviewed the program of their reconstruction of the tea room and discovered that additional square footage was necessary to make the spaces efficient. And so as a result, the proposal is looking to add an additional 240 square feet of additional square footage to the building. Most of the square footage being requested during the modification are back-of-house service areas or office spaces. In fact, as a result of the increase in square footage, the occupancy load of the building is actually decreasing, not significantly, but it is decreasing slightly. And so with that said, staff recommends the planning commission review the findings as well as recommend approval of the modification to conditional use permit CUP 20-19 and approve the resolution PCR 21-11. I open for questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff from the commissioners at this time? Okay, then I will ask the applicant or the applicant's representatives to please present their proposal.
Can you hear me? Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for your time tonight. I will make this brief as can. My name is Tom Polanski. I'm the vice president for operations and facilities at the Huntington. On the Zoom call, we have Audrey Ng, our project manager, who can drive a few slides to show you. And then we have Stephen Farneth joining via Zoom. He's the project architect from Architectural Resources Group who can better explain the minor change we're requesting tonight. Stephen, are you on?
Yes, can everyone hear me? Can everyone hear me?
Stephen, can you turn up your volume, please?
Can everyone hear me now?
Yes. Can you hear him maybe a little bit louder?
Yeah. How is that any better? Thank you. Okay, thank you. Sorry. Yes, good evening. I'm Steve Farneth. I'm the principal architect in charge of this project on the grounds of the Huntington. And as mentioned, it involves the rehabilitation and restoration of the tea house. Tea house facility, which was originally Henry Huntington's billiard room and has been modified and developed and changed many times over the years. We presented the project back in February, and it was approved. And as we've gone through construction documents and much more detailed development of the kitchen, we realized we needed a little bit more storage area and a little bit more area for equipment needs. And so that's why we're back tonight is to present that. And you can see on this plan, the areas in yellow are additional square footage from the original approved plan. None of the seating areas or major functional areas have changed, and therefore, none of the occupant load or any other use issues are being proposed or changed, just this additional yellow storage. And then in green, the lobby is actually being reduced. We're moving the lobby doors back to the north about five feet, so in fact, it's a, it's a net increase of 190 square feet if you add the yellow and subtract the green. Next slide, please. The, the changes don't affect, have any effect on the primary, a primary elevations of the building. Next, please. And you can see in this sort of aerial view, the areas in yellow are all in the back of house. They don't actually impinge on the garden. Either they're really moving into primarily the service court of the Uberu, so the changes are very minor and are not impacting the original design intent or approval intent of the project. Next, please. Next, please. Next slide, please. Thank you.
This is the last slide.
Yeah, okay, thanks, Audrey. So I put this back in case there are any questions. But I think it's pretty clear that the modifications are, are pretty minor. They're really based on kitchen function and not on anything related to the performance or intensity of use of the facility. And they have no real impact on the elevations or view or appearance. So that's, that's a quick summary and happy to take any questions if there are any.
Do any of the commissioners have questions for the applicant? I just had a brief one, just to try and understand the lobby change a little bit. So if I understand it correctly, that green area, which I'll just sort of call the landing, you're basically moving the doors from the south wall to the north wall.
Correct. Yes, yeah, we, we're making the lobby a little smaller.
At this time, I'll open the hearing to public comment. Is there anyone who would like to speak for, against, or about this project at this time, either here or online, please signify to that effect.
Chair, I see no one online requesting to speak.
Then I'm going to close public comment on this item, and we'll move into deliberations. Why don't we start with you, Commissioner Chang?
Hello. Yeah, I mean, I think the additions since the last CP was, are minimal, and as the architect described, I don't see them impacting the overall design or aesthetic, so I'd be in support of it.
Thank you. Commissioner Brody? Thank you. Vice Chair Boyle?
I mean, the easiest thing to say is I agree with everything that's been said so far. I think that, yeah, I agree that I think that the modifications are minimal. It's not going to make an impact to the design. And so I think I would approve this.
Right. I'm in agreement with my colleagues. I can fully support the request for the modification. Do I have a motion?
A second.
Do we have roll call? Do we need to?
Do we have to approve the resolution as well?
Can you include the resolution in the motion?
A second.
Roll call, please.
Yes, Chair. Commissioner Ogasaki?
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Brody? Vice Chair Boyle? Chair Dustin?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you very much. With that, we will move to agenda item number two. This is a conditional use permit CUP 21-03 at 2148 Huntington Drive. Could we have the staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair. The operator of New Moon Restaurant is requesting a conditional use permit to provide onsite sales and consumption of beer and wine and ancillary use to the existing food service restaurant. The New Moon Restaurant has been in operation at the current location since 2013, providing lunch and dinner services of Chinese cuisine with the help of eight to nine employees. The restaurant is located in a multi-tenant building with other food service businesses, offices, and general retail businesses. The proposed beer and wine service with the purchase of a complete meal would not alter the existing sitting arrangement, the business hours, nor would it attract customers who would not otherwise visit the restaurant. For this reason, staff finds that the request, the conditional use permit, will not have a detrimental effect on, upon the nature, condition of nearby uses and parking demand in the vicinity. Based on the nature, business hours, and operation of the business, staff can make the required finding for the conditional use permit. As noted in your staff report that on the condition of approved full documents, those are conditioned inconsistent with the municipal code required for a business that serve beer and wine, and that includes no advertisement of the beer and wine service, no pool table, and this is to ensure that the restaurant will not eventually turn into a bar or lounge type of business, and it will remain as a food service restaurant with equipment and manual to demonstrate that it is capable of providing food service completely new. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff from the commission? I have no questions. This time then, I'd like to ask the applicant or the applicant's representative to please come forward and present your request.
Hello, my name is Helen Nguyen. I'm the owner of New Moon. So I agree with everything that's said. We're not going to change anything from the restaurant setting or anything like that. It's just adding the BNY to complement the meal.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant from the commission? No, okay, thank you. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing or public comment period on this item. Are there any members of the community who would like to speak for, against, or about this project, either here or online, please signify your wish to do so?
Chair, I see no request for comments online.
Okay, and that gives I'm going to close the public comment period on this item, and we'll move into commission deliberations. Let's start with Vice Chair Boyle.
I don't have any. I have, I fully support this. I agree with the staff report. I think it's a good addition to the restaurant and can agree with approving it.
Thank you. Commissioner Brody? Thank you.
I can support the application. I think it'd be a nice combination to what they're already doing with their meals. The service is good.
Commissioner Ogasaki?
I also support the application for onsite sale of alcohol, beer and wine. I think that's very appropriate for that particular restaurant.
Thank you. Yeah, I concur with basically everything's been said. I've been able to make all the required findings with this CP, and I think it will be a plus for the business and for the community. Is there a motion?
I move to approve conditional use permit 2103.
With the standard?
With the standard conditions of approval.
I second.
Thank you. Could we have roll call, please?
Um, Chair, just to clarify, the motion is also to include adoption of the resolution.
I amend my motion to include the resolution.
Commissioner Ogasaki?
Second amendment.
And roll call.
Commissioner Ogasaki?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Brody? Vice Chair Boyle? Yes, Chair Dustin?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Chair, I'm going to recuse myself on the next case.
All righty, thank you.
There's still four, three, correct.
We have four. Yeah, we're good. Thank you. Okay, then we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. This is a design review case number DRC 21-24 HP and DRC 21-39 at 1705 Sharon Place. Can we have the staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair. The applicant is requesting to construct a single-story residence with an attached two-car garage. Additionally, the project also includes side yard fencing and a gate located adjacent to a side street, which is Rose Avenue in this case. The project really involved the restoration of a single-family structure to its former appearance as being in the street. The restoration, the restoration work will be performed in accordance with the Secretary of the Interior standard as provided in the impact assessment report dated May 7, 2021, and that was provided to your, in your packet as attachment number four. In terms of design review, staff is able to make the finding for all of the design review requirement for the single-story structure as proposed, the height of the structure will blend in with the existing single-family residence, especially given the corner property and the repurposing of some of the existing material, including the existing front door. The overall feel of the property will remain the same with additional landscaping provided along the front and the side of the property. Staff is able to make the finding for the side yard fencing, with the exception of the proposed side yard gate that will, staff finds that the side yard gates provide a very institution views to the corner property, and that wood fencing will be more appropriate with landscaping in front of it. And that's why you will see a condition in the recommended approval that the gate be reused from the project. With that note, staff is concluding the staff report and overall question.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff?
Um, I do. I thought that I this report, and I'm sorry, I don't, I mean, I'm looking at it on my computer and I can't find it real quickly. I thought that there was also a concern with the garage door. Am I, am I wrong?
No, you're not. You're correct. Um, so there is also an additional condition regarding the garage door. The applicant would like to use the previous, the former door that was a steel material, which is not recommended by city standard. So staff is recommending the use of a wood material door since it would be facing the street. The architect is certainly going to detail as to the reasoning behind this, this selection.
Any other questions for staff from the commission? Then I'd like to ask the applicant or the applicant's representative to please come forward and present their project.
Hello, my name is Feng Xiao, and I'm the principal of architectural firm FSA located 2540 Huntington Drive, suite number 207. You know, I mean, thank you for the opportunity. This is actually a very first time after pandemic, we have a face-to-face hearing, you know, it's kind of exciting. So, you know, anyway, for the project, since Eva did a very thorough report, is the material is about over 200 pages. I'm not going to go over all, or the, or the detail. This project already went through different review and the process. I mean, I would say what we proposed as this new structure, try to create a compatible architecture for the neighborhood. It is a one-story building, minimal traditional style, which existing in the neighborhood and also at a smaller scale from, you know, old architectural style to all the details, including, you know, roofing materials, window, need all, we're trying to meet all the high-quality standards San Marino has, and then also bring back the vernacular-style architecture. So, and also, we not only kept the one-story, we kept the eight-foot blade height all the way around the building, simplify the roof. Try to, you know, bring the, keep the original door, the front door for the conditions. Staff proposed, we already talked to the owner, and we're in line with it. I mean, the only reason we kept the garage door as before is we tried to keep the regional look, but we're definitely, we're, we're open to change it to wood garage door, which is the more standard of San Marino. I, and we also removed all the non-conforming condition from the existing home, including the setbacks and log coverage. So anyway, so we hope to move the project forward and to bring a good building to the neighborhood. That will conclude my presentation. I'm here to answer any question you might have.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the applicant from the mission? Anything can change? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have some questions. So I'm going to open the public comment period on this item. If there are any members of the public who would like to speak for, against, or about this project, either here or online, if you could please indicate that to staff so we can hear your comments. Yes, please.
All right, thank you very much. My name is Bu Yang. I live at 1730 Sharon Place, just across the street. It's like I'm a neighbor. I reviewed the plan a long time ago. I think the design is pretty similar to the original one, like the proposed new building. The new house is very similar to the original house. It's also one-story building, and it consistent with the, the style of the neighborhood. Actually, I'm very surprised. The project has not been finished. So I don't feel comfortable to see a construction site for so long. So I hope the, the plan and the application can be approved as soon as possible, and the project can be finished as soon as possible. I support the application.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment? Please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Yin, and I live on 226, 226 Woodlong Avenue, and I often walk past by 1705 Sharon Place, and I've seen their architectural drawing. It looks very charming, and it blends in, the style blends in with the neighborhood. So I really hope you can approve their plans so they can finish their construction, which that started since last summer. So our neighborhood can get back to the way it was. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this project? I don't see anyone here. Do we have anyone online? All right. Then I'm going to close the public comment period on this issue, and we'll move into commission deliberations. And if we could start with Commissioner Ogasaki.
Commissioner Ogasaki, can you unmute yourself?
I am so sorry. I forgot to unmute myself. But anyway, I was saying that I realized that we had to stop this project last year, but I think the current plans look fine. I think the the staff report explains everything in terms of what we need to do, and so I support the project as currently represented by the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Brody?
I agree with that.
All right, thank you. Vice Chair Boyle?
I agree with everything that's been said as well. I agree with the staff report. I think that the design is good, and yes, it does bring it back to the somewhat historical framework of what the house was. I do agree with the side yard gate concerns as well as the garage. I think it should be the wood garage as opposed to the steel one, and other than that, I can support this project.
Thank you. Yeah, I have Thank you. Um, yeah, I have really only minor, minor concerns, and they are both having to do with the gate and the garage door. Uh, I just wanted to comment that I really appreciate the applicant uh and their architect. Keeping that eight-foot plate height and the single story, that is a very charming neighborhood, and this house was very charming in its day, and I think they're really doing a good job at bringing that back. My, I share Commissioner Brody and Vice Chair Boyle's concerns with the gate and and staff's concerns. It it does have a little bit of an industrial look to it. My concern with the garage door is not just with the materials, it's also with the um the glazing on it, um, the windows on the top. Uh, again, this is a house of um very, very traditional design. Uh, it does have um historical value and to have those windows with that ellipse curve is just simply not um what you would find in in a house of this time when it was originally built. You don't see ellipsed windows on anything but a door that has a curve to these, the the body of the door. So if they really want to have glazing there, they should be squared off. Often I, but I think that those two things could be conditioned quite easily for staff to work with the applicant. I would like to see that neighborhood get this done and so that they can enjoy peace and quiet again. Uh, do I have a motion? Sounds sufficient for me.
I second that.
Great. Uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Ogasaki?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Brody? Vice Chair Boyle?
Yes.
Chair Dustin?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. And I believe we don't have any other materials for discussion at this meeting. Is that correct? So um with that, I will, oh, I was just going to ask real quick. I kind of wanted to uh put on the agenda for a future meeting, just to have a quick discussion about people's experience with the planning commission academy. If you guys did that, um, I just, I thought it was really helpful and I was just curious what other people thought of it and but we can't talk about it unless it's agendized. So is there any objection to put that on a future agenda?
No.
Great, okay. Uh, with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting and um I dare any subsequent chairs to try and beat that record. Oh, really?